We're done with the sunshine chat, I need to go need to talk to you real quick.
Want to call though? The special city council workshop on June fifth four thirty, would everybody please stand for the plate? Would anybody like to offer a prayer or would we rather just have a moment of silence?
Hey man, thank you.
We're gonna do the old five.
Mayor Dunn.
Here.
Vice Mayor Inskeep.
Here.
Councilperson Mendonza here.
Councilman Lehman.
Here.
Councilwoman Covage. Chad Ward, Public Services Manager.
Here.
Julie Danowski, Records Clerk. And Andrew Hand.
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Tuesday, May thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three.
Okay. Andrew, since this is Sunshine, I'm gonna just turn this over to you.
Hey, before we do that, Wally.
Yep.
I didn't think Chad needed to be in this meeting.
He probably doesn't.
Right. Chad, I didn't realize you were coming in here for this somewhere. I think communication got lined up. It'll give you almost an hour of your life back.
You, you need to be back at five thirty though. They don't need to be here, but they can.
Right. Chris, Ron. Well, I don't want to speak for you.
Yeah, y'all don't need to attend this. This is on Sunshine, but if you would like to attend, you're welcome to stay an hour and have fun. It's totally up to you. Okay, that sounds like a good option. It, this, this meeting should be for everybody on City Council and the planning zoning group as well, just to do an annual update on the Sunshine legislation. Okay, Andrew, now you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Sunshine law. So I've been giving talks on Sunshine Law just like this for over fifteen years and what I found in giving them. I think the best format for it is just to kind of go through some of this. Some of you may have seen me do some of it before and what I, what I like to do is really open up the conversation. And just chat a little bit about it because I find that going through some of the basics, it really doesn't take a long time. But as I've said in all these presentations, you know, in the past, really there's a stack of case law this big, so we can make it as complex or as, as straightforward as you need to. Really keeping it as straightforward and pared down as simple as possible is what makes it probably the easiest to not violate the Sunshine Law, just sticking to basic tenants. So that's what I like to stick to. But what also becomes helpful, I think, you know, when I've given these talks before. I'll get questions from Planning Board members or from, from City Council saying, well, what if this happens? And they create a factual scenario. You know, fictional, not something that's happened to them necessarily, but something they are wondering about, maybe they saw it on the news. And we walk through it and kind of do an analysis and that seems to be really helpful and, and always keeping officials in the mindset, okay, how does this work? How can I keep myself out of trouble? Because there are particularly times that I think when officials who want to follow the law a hundred percent. Are in danger more so than other times of breaking the law because of comfortableness and not thinking about it. So I'll get to that. We'll start off talking about what it is. Sunshine law in a nutshell, and if that's, is that format good for everybody? And feel free to interrupt me. I think it is a bit more casual, so if there's something you're not understanding or if there's something you want me to, to go a little bit further on. I'm not following a PowerPoint or any kind of a, you know, a real set process in stone like I used to when I first started giving these things. Just because people are interested in, in aspects, you know, that are mostly relevant to them and feel free to interrupt me, ask me questions. But, you know, really the Sunshine Law is, is pretty, pretty basic. It's, it's really boils down to the tenant that public business must be conducted in public. Things don't happen behind closed doors where members of the public can't observe what's going on in their special district, their local government. Whatever form of government that it is that is required to, to, you know, operate in the Sunshine. So. I think. The thing to keep in mind are probably just the basic, you know, three components of the statute. If you were to go look at chapter two eighty-six and look at it. The Sunshine Law requires essentially that meetings of boards or commissions must be open to the public, open to the public. We'll kind of get into what that means a little bit in a second. Reasonable notice must be posted and minutes of the meeting must be taken. Those are the three components there. Now, open to the public, what does that mean? It needs to be in a place that's accessible to the public at a time, it's accessible to the public, it's been properly noticed. Kind of bleeds over to that second tenant. But in other words, you know, there, there's case law where things were noticed, a meeting was noticed, but the meeting actually occurred one hundred miles from the actual location of the local government. And so the court found, no, you can't do that. You know, it has to be local. So if you all are going to meet, has to be local, public has to be able to come in. And you have to have those minutes and notice, that's really it. But like I said, we have situation where those three tenants and we have a stack of case law this high. Now, what does that really mean? Does that mean that the legislature, I can't, I'm not really going to get into whether the legislature did a good job of drafting the statute or not. But for whatever reason, it has created a lot of litigation and that's because it's very loose. You know, there's a lot of terms that are not defined, reasonable notice. That's all been interpreted by the courts because all it says in the statutes is reasonable notice. Is that by design? Probably we can touch on that too, because I think that, you know, the way the courts have interpreted it, the way the legislature designed it. Whether that ultimately, you know, matches up exactly, I think it was meant to be a very broad and inclusive statute that, you know, covers any kind of circumvention. And I think that's the reason that it's not as tightly drafted as you might see some other statutes. It's just meant to try to capture everything, which, you know. Perhaps that's not entirely fair to elected officials who sit in your shoes because you don't have, you know, clear law that spells out everything, but it also is just a broad measure saying. Stay away from, from things that can get you in trouble. Part of the reason that I wanted to, to give, in addition to it being something that we try to cover annually and just go over, recently there've been two really high profile. Situations. One is in Sumter County and the other is in the city of Sebastian. Essentially in Sumter County, there were two, two residents of the villages who were on the county commission. They were talking and speaking to each other before meetings. A lot of evidence was found, phone records, emails, a lot of conversation, clear violations. They got in a lot of trouble going to jail. Likewise in Sebastian and I brought along an appeal case. There were actually three council members who, who held an illegal meeting and they were convicted. One of the members in particular, Pamela Paris, made an appeal and her appeal was essentially denied by the court. And one of the things that's interesting about this case, you know, it, it goes through, I think, the, the first part of it is just simply a reputation of the argument, the arguments that she's made. She was also charged with, with perjury. And the court walks through it and walks through their logic. There's some interesting things in there. You know, as we go through the tenants here, I don't think that it's something that we really. Kind of hampered down with this case, but the interesting thing about this case, what makes it different than other cases is there was a concurrence written by a judge. I'm sure you all know about concurrences and dissents. Some judges sometimes add on and want to add something and create a concurrence. And obviously we have a dissent when a judge doesn't agree with the rest of their panel. If it's a multi-judge situation and appeal, which it always is. And in this concurrence, we have a judge, this will be the last thing that I touch on, but I just didn't want to make you aware of it and kind of open with it. In this concurrence, this judge essentially said, hey, this is a great opportunity to send a message to all elected officials. And I want to give them, you know, these seven or eight. Paragraphs to tell them how to stay out of trouble. And so it's essentially an open letter addressed to elected officials by this judge. And it's, it's important, I think, because we'll talk about some of the exceptions to the Sunshine Law. And the judge's concurrence didn't really take that into effect, even didn't take those into consideration, you know, spell that out very broad. So I don't know if that's a sign that in the future courts will kind of move away from allowing some of the exceptions or so forth. But I guess the point being is that whenever there is Sunshine Law violation. You know, courts are really going to take an extremely conservative approach. That's been. I think. Really. Consistent throughout all of the, the cases that we've seen since the law was, you know, first adopted by the legislature. So just kind of going through some of the basics here, violation of the Sunshine Law is a criminal violation if there's intent. Intent is an element. So if there's a complaint, it will be investigated by, by usually some, some sort of a law enforcement because it's prosecuted by the state attorney. So important to keep in mind, and that's even if sometimes there can be Sunshine Law violations that are technical, those are not misdemeanors, but. There's a complaint, it will be reviewed first criminally. So a few things that means, a few things as far as what that means. That's second degree misdemeanor. Punishment can be up to sixty days in, in jail as well as five hundred dollar fine. So. Ms. Paris, for instance, I believe she's getting ready from a, a news article I see from the end of May. This was something that happened and I'll tell you a bit about the factual background of the case as we go on, but it's something that happened during COVID. And she will be going to, according to this May article, be going to jail, starting her sentence soon for the ninety day conviction, ninety days. Because in addition to Sunshine Law criminal, criminal violation that she was convicted of, she also was convicted of perjury. So a little bit longer sentence. But sixty days in jail, five hundred dollar fine. That's what officials face. Now, if it's a non-criminal infraction, you know, where there was not an intent, an element, there's just a technical violation. That is punishable with a fine up to five hundred dollars. Also, whatever action was taken, if there was an action taken. At, you know, a meeting that wasn't properly noticed or, you know, essentially an illegal meeting, whatever action is taken is. It is not a valid action. So if there was some sort of contract sign or something else, it's void. That is what. Council members, elected officials, appointed officials, people who are subjected to Sunshine Law, you know, face as potential penalties. And I think some things to keep in mind with that, you know, it, it doesn't matter, even though there's an element of intent. It doesn't matter. If. You know, an, an official was, there's no defense of ignorant to. There's no defense, well, I don't think this makes sense, or, you know, you can't reason your way out of it. It's very, very blunt. And if there is a complaint, one of the things, I, I think everything I might tell you that follows, one of the things to really keep in mind. Is that when boards and councils are dealing with controversial decisions. Sunshine Law can be weaponized, or at least perception. Someone sees two council members talking, they might be talking about something else, but they're upset about the way certain council members voted. My file a complaint. Now, if there's no basis, you know, beyond just, oh, I saw such and such talking, it's likely that that wouldn't be investigated. You'd find, you know, no probable cause and investigation wouldn't proceed. But if there's a little bit more meat to it and they start taking a look. You know, Sunshine Law investigations, I've seen several over the course of my career are unpleasant, especially if it makes its way to the press. Because there's article after article after article written. It can take, you know, sometimes up to a year for an investigation to fully come to conclusion. And even if council members are exonerated, I've never seen, I've not seen a, a conviction. You know, with any clients that I've ever worked with where I've known of investigations. But where it has become a big press issue, that's still a whole year's worth, at least six months' worth of really negative press articles and, you know. Typically out of things that, that could be avoided. And so, you know, that causes a lot of stress. It causes stress to the community. It causes stress to the officials, of course, who are. Having to, you know, essentially go and have depositions and speak to, to law enforcement about what they did or did not do. So it's always best to just stay as far away from any, any problems, you know, that council members can. Who it applies to. One of the things that I will tell you, and it's just important to note, doesn't apply to the state legislature. They have stated that you have to follow the laws, but they do not. And whether that's good policy or not, I won't give you an opinion about that. But, you know, I don't know that they really could operate if they didn't. But i- if they had to operate in Sunshine, but the legislature does not. However, every other state. Every other state, uh, you know, going down through the state, every other board that, um. Operates as government is covered, unless it's a fact-finding board, purely fact-finding board, and oftentimes that does not. It's not something that, um, you know, Denell does not have a purely fact-finding board, most cities do not. So, any of the city boards and so forth, board members are all subject to sunshine law. Um, I think the best way to think about it is anyone who's in the decision-making chain. You know, something that ultimately comes to you all, you are the deciders, decision-makers per se of the city. Um, any other boards that, that work with the city, those are gonna be covered under the sunshine law. What is a meeting? Meetings, of course, we're at a, a meeting right now, it's been noticed. Uh, workshops or meetings, meetings or meetings, anytime where there's public discussion of business, business is being conducted. That is very obvious, we know when we're sitting in a meeting. The thing is, uh, that is a little bit. Blessed at the forefront of logic. Anytime that you have any discussion with anyone. Uh, any other member of your board. Um, about anything that could foreseeably come before your board. Then that would be a meeting. I think the thing to keep in mind is what, and, and it's interesting, one of the things, of course, uh. You told staff and, and, uh. Uh, the, uh. The police chief, they don't need to, to be in here for the presentation, well, they don't, because they're not a board. Um, there, now, I'll talk about one little exception that's interesting, where you can have a potential sunshine issue with just a single person. Um, but, you know, typically sunshine law does not govern anyone unless they're part of a board. And it does not apply if you're having discussions or meetings with members of, of their boards. So in other words, one thing that it's important for you all to know. Uh, if you, any one of you individually have a conversation with a member of the planning board, member of the historic board, that's okay. Doesn't apply to your conversations with staff, that's always okay. But it applies to all of you if you have any interactions with each other outside of the public meeting. Um, so. Any type of discussion about something to foreseeably come before, it doesn't have to be something that is. Immediately pending, just something that could be city business, and you can see how big that umbrella is. It's fine to talk about, you know, any of your potential outside of, uh, civics type of business, I mean, any type of. Uh, any type of interests, uh, private interest business, as long as it's not something that applies to city business, so if. Mayor, you were having a discussion about someone up here with hunting, fishing. Or, uh, someone was having a discussion about, you know, kids' sports, any type of thing like that, it's perfectly okay. Perfectly to interact on those type of levels, and, you know, perception is an issue, and we'll touch on that too. But it's just important to remember that anything that could be city business, that's where council members can get in trouble. And I think, um, that's a good time to, to talk about, you know, where I think that the council member is a little bit more at risk. Um. The only time that you can have a meeting is, of course, big tenant first is if it's noticed. So, this meeting, for instance, it's noticed for four thirty, uh, gavel goes down, the meeting starts, we're in the meeting. Now, I think, uh, I've never been to, I always say, I've never been to a meeting before. Where I didn't see something that could have been a sunshine violation. Because meeting starts at four thirty, but. Council members come to the meeting early to get situated, and everybody sits up on the dais, that gavel hasn't hit yet. But people are talking, they're talking in low voices, you see them across the room, I don't have a concern, generally because I've. Prepared elected officials and told them, you know, they know. The basics of sunshine law, and they know that, hey, yeah, we can interact and have a social conversation, we can't talk about city business. But I can't hear, members of the public can't hear. And so, potentially, if people are talking and, and the public, you know, sees that up there, uh, there could be violations. And, um, the important thing to keep in mind is always keep that in mind. Cause, the important thing to keep in mind is always keep that in mind, that's, that's a weird way of saying it, but yes, yes. Because when you're sitting up here, you're getting ready for that meeting, you're in that mindset, hey, we're about to talk about city business. So it's easy to slip up, make a mistake, and, you know, say, hey, well, what do you think about this, this is coming up? Or, you know, hey, look at this agenda, I, I can't read that, you, you know, it's easy to make a mistake. Likewise, at the end of meetings, once the gavel goes down. Um, I've seen, uh, you know, potential sunshine violations, where maybe something got heated at the meeting, and someone follows up, hey, I didn't mean that, you know, I'm sorry, I meant to. I can't do that. Manners don't matter in sunshine law, in fact, manners oftentimes get people in trouble. Because they want to be nice, they want to be civil, they want to explain themselves. You know. Gavel to gavel is the only time to do it, and so I think right before a meeting and right after a meeting. Those are the most dangerous times, parking lots. Most dangerous times, especially when there's a citizen or someone else who says, hey, I gotta talk to you about this, and other council members walking by, they hear something, they're like, well, hey, that's not exactly what we were saying. And then you've got two council members there, somebody else says something, all of a sudden, there'd be a sunshine violation. So those are the kind of things that, you know, that worry me and that I always want to bring up and point out. Always be careful with that, and it's always important to have that cap on, hey, I'm covered by sunshine law. I've gotta be careful going into the meeting, I've gotta be careful exiting the meeting. So, um, just something that I've always seen, I want to make you aware of. Uh, if you ever do have to meet with another member, it's best to set it up through Mandy, because then she can do the full proper notice, you know, sometimes you have council meetings where you're just gonna have. I, I've seen before, it happens very frequently, but maybe just two people, they can't have a meeting for a forum per se. But, you know, if there needs to be a discussion, you can set something up with Mandy and, and go that route. You just have to follow those patterns, notice public can attend in minutes, so there's ways to, to deal with that, you know. In, in Denellen, special meetings are. You know, not every month, but if something needs to be addressed fairly frequently, you all have lots of opportunity to at least address each other and. And, and speak, and you can always call a special meeting or, or work with staff if you need to have something discussed, and, and, uh. Uh, it's important to do to, to make sure you all stay safe. Um. One of the things to keep in mind, uh, you know. Again, the sunshine law is designed to. Really be inescapable, so it doesn't matter the forum or the means, probably a better term of communication. It's phone calls, it's text messages, emails, it's any form of communication. There's also, uh, you know, the conduit type of issue where, and this is another area where people get in trouble. You know. One board member saying something to someone who's not on the board, and then that person goes and says something to another individual. And then it comes back somehow around, and perhaps there's an exchange of communication. Generally, there is that exchange, now, are courts moving away from an exchange? I don't know, we'll talk about that in a second. Um, and that's what worries me. Um, but generally, you have to have a give and take, you know, for there to be a, a violation. Um, one of the examples is, is, is an exception, position paper, for instance. Uh, council members are allowed to create a position paper, I don't recommend it. But you all are allowed, if you have a very strong opinion on something, to create a position paper. And have that distributed, if you ever go that route, I would recommend give it to Mandy, let Mandy distribute it, so you don't inadvertently get a message back. And get in trouble, you know, via that, that route. But I don't recommend it for, for several reasons, it is an exception. I do, it allows for that one-way communication, I think courts might be moving away from that, where that was ruled valid in the past, possibly. Don't know, because the sunshine law is very vague, and, you know, I have to give you the advice on what I'm seeing in trends in courts. And I don't know until it's ultimately litigated yet. Um, but, uh. If a position paper goes out, you know, be an exception, it does a couple things, somebody puts their opinion out there, well, if. Another council member reads it and they disagree, that disagreeing council member cannot respond. Cannot respond, they're essentially shut down from it, so, you know, if, if their position paper goes out. You might get some backlash from other fellow council members, because it's, takes their voice away, they cannot respond to it. That's, that's one sort of big issue with, with that exception. Uh, the other thing, of course, is if it's not construed correctly, it can result in violation, so I recommend just staying away from it, and if you need to say something, you know, get with Mandy, I can give you advice. Um, Manny knows the stuff really well. Uh, and, uh, you know, i- i- it's that important that it needs to happen right away, it's something that, you know, can do via a meeting or figure out some other way to get that communication built up. Um.
I have a question, Andrew.
Yeah.
Um. I write letters, opinion letters, sometimes, uh, guest speaker. Uh, letters for our local paper, the Riverland News. And there was an incident where I wrote an opinion. Uh, it really wasn't an issue on our agenda, but it was something that was of common discussion for the community. And someone contacted. Someone here in the office, and I got a message saying, if you're going to write letters in the future. Do not put member of Denellen Council. Was that, is that, I should just use my name and not put it, put after a council person, the city of Denellen?
I, I, you know, that is not something that, that I.
And I, I have quit doing that, at, at one time I was putting. Member of city council, and after I got that message, I just stopped doing that.
That's not something that earns me legally, that second part of it, I, I think, first of all, by, one of the, let me address a, a couple of different aspects of it, because. Your question's actually going to something a little bit different, but let me. Address the broader part first, so the first part, you know, council members are allowed to have opinions, you're allowed to put your opinions out there. Um, by writing that opinion letter, it's going to a newspaper, you know, the whole point of sunshine law is to keep everything, you know, something. Not happening, keep letting the, the public see without backroom conversation. You know, that's out in the newspaper, this is something that hasn't been litigated, not to my knowledge. Um, and, you know, so that's an opinion, is it an opinion letter, because it's out there, everybody can see it. I would, my advice, of course, would be to other council members. You know, don't respond to that, uh, because we haven't seen it litigated yet, it doesn't really capture, you know, if someone were to say. And, and another council member were to write a response to that, well, it's all out there in the public. Anybody who's a subscriber can read it, it, it's not really, I think, capturing the original intent of, you know, that's not the back room, right? But we don't know how courts would see it, and of course, considering that it's been so conservative with it, it ruled, I would advise nobody to respond to that. So that's the first thing there, I think that I'd like to touch on, but your actual question is completely something different. Your actual question is, um, is, is I understand it, well, should I attach my name to that opinion? Legally, I don't have any, any issue with that, and, and not name, pardon me, title to it, I, I think that. Uh, you know, by expressing it, saying, I'm a city council member and I believe this, that doesn't. Cause me, you know, that doesn't worry me from a legal standpoint. Um. It, it, the sunshine law, whether or not. We're, we're talking about sunshine law applicability, whether your title is on there or title not there, it doesn't matter, because it applies to you as a council member, and you're a council member no matter what. So by adding the title.
Yes.
Legally, I don't see, you know, that, that there's more of a risk there, you know, is there a risk by putting that newspaper article out there and expressing an opinion? Maybe if somebody responds to it, but again, you're allowed to have opinions, and so you have to, and, and. Yeah, I would advise other council members not to respond to it, so whether that's a good idea or not, you know, I leave that all up to you. Um, but could that cause an issue potentially, but. Adding, you know, that you're a council member, um, I don't see that as a, a legal issue.
Andrew, can I just follow up, so I think it. One of the things that I'm thinking is if I were to, if something were to be coming before the council this month, and it was a, um. You know, a contentious issue in the community, and I write a letter to the editor that says, I think that we should do this, or I think that we shouldn't do this, and I write. You know, of course we should do this, because it makes all the sense in the world, and it's a really great thing to do, and, and I'll, I'll vote for this, whatever. That's not very advisable, is it? To, to write something in the newspaper that's weighing in on something that five people have not yet discussed to make a decision about.
Well, it creates that position type of paper issue, where if somebody responds to it, there could be a potential violation. And so to take the most conservative route, yes, the safest way, of course, is to express opinions and to, to go about it. And if you're gonna publish something or publish an opinion to actually do it, uh, sometimes it can be put on an agenda, you know, included as an agenda packet. And communicate it all at the meeting, that way that that issue never arises.
Okay, because if one person writes, I really think we should do it, then I could potentially the next week write to the letter of the editor as a council person and say, I don't think we should do it. And we would both be okay, as long as the other people didn't respond, is that right?
Well, I suppose, you know, in that. If i- it's just an opinion and it's not addressing that initial opinion, that becomes kind of very nuanced, right? Because is it, how is a court gonna look at that, I can't really say, so does it create? Potential, potential danger there, I'm gonna be very, very conservative with this, I'm not gonna take any kind of a root, you know, otherwise, I'd say, yeah, possibly.
Yeah.
You know, because. Courts just look at that, that way.
Super.
You know, i- if it's a response in any kind of a way, yeah, it'd be a problem. Hey, um. So. That was, that's one of the exceptions. Um, you know, another exception to, to look at. Is a social exception, which really isn't exceptional, it's just been characterized that in, in case law. And it's simply that stated that you're allowed to have social life, you're allowed to go out and see each other socially, as long as that is, you know, um, limited just to that social conversation, is not city business. So it's really not an exception, they call it one, though, but it's just to, to let you all know that you still can interact with each other. Um, I think the important thing to remember there, though, that always comes down is, and, and it. It ties into every element of this, this talk that we're having, is perception, perception is so, so key, because. Um, like I said, I've seen a lot of different investigations, I've never seen a conviction. You know, wonderful, that's great, um, with, with clients, but, um. You know, and, and I don't believe that there was a, a violation in, in the issues that I know about, but. Perception. You know, that's what starts the investigation process, someone filing a complaint, because it's complaint-driven. Uh, and you just. That, like I said, beginning of meetings, end of meetings, there's always that opportunity, so it's important to always keep in mind how it's gonna be perceived, if I am gonna have social interactions, you know, how. Just need to make sure that it doesn't look like you're talking about city business, right? Um, I know that you've all had to do education and so forth, uh, as new council members, you may or may not have seen, um. You know, some of the lectures that my partner Cliff Shepherd has given, but he has a really great, and I, I, I always use this example. Um, because it, it was something he learned so early on in his career, he'd been attorney for many years before he became a city attorney. Thousands of years ago. Um, but, uh, at this particular city. Um, you know, what, what they did, uh. And when I say they, city council, and, and they actually had the police chief in the room too, um, it was a little bit later, meets. This particular council met later than Denell meets, they, they didn't start until six thirty or so, their meetings. And the way that this particular, um. Uh, city hall was laid out, there was a room that had, it was a glass room, off to the side, like a conference room, and then. Uh, you know, appears, so imagine there's a, a classroom over there, and you can see into it, and then. You know, businesses conduct here. Well, prior to the meeting, uh, generally, because it came out, you know, it was a little bit later, uh, they had the practice, um. Of going in there to have dinner, and so the city attorney would usually sit with city council, have dinner. And they're just like, uh, bring a bagged dinner sandwich or something, and, uh, the police chief, since they were all. You know, part of the, the meeting to come, and, and they would talk about anything but city business. Um, sports, you know, whatever. And again, just like I alluded to earlier, it was a time where there was some political consternation. Uh, some hot button topics coming up, and someone filed a report. And it was investigated, and ultimately, everyone was cleared, but that is where that example that it came from, how unpleasant they can be. Because that was very highly publicized, they are not always highly publicized, but. Press becomes aware of them, it will be highly publicized, and it was extremely unpleasant for all those council members. Now, you know, uh, aside from. Cliff telling that story early on in his career, you know, one of the things that's important to, um, note there is, well, the police chief was in a room with them. So if there was a violation that had occurred, the police chief would then duty-bound a report, so, you know, I, I don't know whether or not that. Factored into, uh, the actual clearance, but, you know, that's something to keep in mind, even with the police chief in the room. Uh, they still went through the whole investigatory process, and it was, it was apparently a really rough one. Also, um, you know, im- important to, to keep in mind, in. Getting back into, or I was talking about communications in any kind of, uh. Format, you know, there's another example with, with note passing at a, a city council meeting, where one member was very upset with the way another council member voted. Slipped a note, uh, press saw it, they wanted it, it said Judas on it. Because this member wasn't voting the way that they wanted to, now that might make you think, well. That member thought that member was gonna vote a certain way, did they have conversations about this beforehand? I don't know. All I know is the note was made, the newspaper wanted it, it was public record, they got it, and of course, there were some very, very embarrassing arguments that were written. Um, so notes, you know, anything like that, it's just in- important to, to keep in mind, there's no. Um, incognito communications that, that can occur. Um. Covered social events exception and boundaries, uh, yeah, it applies no matter where you are on the face of the planet, and that has been, um. Covered social events, exception and boundaries, uh, yeah, it applies no matter where you are on the face of the planet. And that has been, um. Now, impetus, I think, for some other violations that have happened that that I'm aware of, just in case law. Where people actually left the jurisdiction to to have conversations, or maybe it happened while they're up in DC for a conference, Washington DC. Uh, those are some things that did happen and and were litigated and ultimately. Um, you know, that was, of course, found to be problematic. So I think, uh, this particular case, I I would like to. Read some. I want to have some time to. Talk and. I know this is. It started a little bit late, a little bit longer than I had I had hoped for. Um, so I'll go through this very quickly, but I I wanted to read some of the those tenants that the the judge provided and I want to allow plenty of time for for question and answer. But just touching on the facts of this case very, very briefly, what happened, uh, city of Sebastian, um. During COVID. There's going to be a controversial topic coming up with, uh, retention of certain administrative personnel. Um. Meeting was publicly noticed. Because of COVID, this was happening in April twenty twenty, it was decided, uh, by the city manager who had the ability to make that decision. And consultation with some other council members, no, we're not going to have a meeting. And so they went about canceling the meeting. That being said, three city council members still showed up, had a pass key, said, oh, well, we have a forum, this meeting. Wasn't handled correctly as far as, uh, canceling it, we're going to have a meeting anyway. Had the key card, went in the building, locked doors. Mayor showed up, the mayor said, what are you guys doing? I'm leaving and took off. Three folks had their meetings anyway, um, took actions and of course it was reported and. Now, all three of those individuals have been prosecuted and will be serving jail. So that's the facts, you know, no matter how it all came apart. Um, as far as the. Concurrent. What was written? Scenario in this case is alarming. Three duly elected members of the Sebastian City Council who were not allowed to privately discuss foreseeable government issues did so anyway. Now. They probably did not think, even though they had been briefed on sunshine law initially, that they were. Having, you know, that they were violating this. Now, I don't know how they did not have that belief, but you know, some I. Typically, people don't intentionally violate the sunshine law. It did appear to be intentional in Sumter County. No, so I don't think that these officials saw this train wreck coming, which is very unfortunate for them. Um. But I'll read to you, go through it quick. This is an excerpt, uh, from the concurrents. Even though ample publications and just as many available seminars, meetings, discussions and groups are specifically charged with fully educating officials, subject to the sunshine law. Which ironically, all three charged city council members attended. Here are my very easy takeaways from the current state of the Florida sunshine law. One, meetings of two or more. Government officials who are subject to the sunshine law are not allowed if any words of any type pertaining to any possible foreseeable issue will be communicated. In any way unless they are open to the public to whom reasonable notice has been provided. And at number one, notice. That exception position paper is not even discussed. Two, there is rarely any purpose for a private meeting or communication between two or more government officials who are both subject to the sunshine law. Those who engage in such activity widely open themselves to allegations that some aspect of the governmental decisional process has unlawfully occurred behind closed doors. Any aspect of the decision process ranging from whether to conduct a meeting in the first instance. To the concept of terminating staff to the seemingly inane decision as to which government officials will make a motion to begin open public discussion. Is part of the official decisional process and must be wide open and advertised in advance to the public. Three, under Florida law, there is no such thing as an informal conference or unofficial caucus or pass you in the hallway, information gathering or sharing by two or more government officials. Subject to the sunshine law, which would thereby remove such communications from the sunshine laws ambit. Indeed, such innocuous meetings have been held to be illegal and nothing short of the unlawful crystallization of secret decisions. To appoint just short of public discussion and ceremonial acceptance. Or. Any attempt to distinguish between a formal, informal, ministerial, information gathering only, or just a listing meeting between two or more government officials, notice how broad that is. For purposes of determining whether the sunshine law applies is by itself. The law's design, exposing it to the very evasions of which it was designed to prevent. Five, because a violation of Florida sunshine law can be investigated and charged as a crime. All those law enforcement and prosecutorial techniques, such as the issuance of subpoenas for cell phone records, is but a signature away. In these cases, prosecutors easily gather data and produced it for the jury, showing numerous texts, emails, telephone conversations and voicemails. Over a wide-ranging period between all three city council members. Six, when in any doubt as to whether a meeting or communication, either directly or indirectly between two or more government officials. May be illegal under the sunshine law, the answer is, and in capital letters here. Leave. This judge cites city of Miami versus Burns. And here's a quote from that case. The evil of closed-door operation of government without permitting public scrutiny and participation is what the law seeks to prohibit. If a public official is unable to know whether by any convening of two or more officials he is violating the law. He should leave the meeting forthwith. So if you think that there's potential for pu- for any kind of violation. Uh, seven. This deals more with, um, the actual perjury and and the reason they touched on some of that evidence stuff with, uh, this particular, um, with Miss, uh. Beris. Is because she had said that, well, I had talked to the city manager and had conversations, the cell phone records didn't show that. And so I think that's what they're touching here. But lying under oath about any matter that is material to an alleged sunshine law violation is an additional crime of perjury. So that can go for up to, I I won't read the rest of this, because I want to take your questions. Um, but, you know, that goes up to a possible additional penalty of a year in jail, not prison. Um, because it's a misdemeanor plus a one thousand dollar fine. Uh, so, i- you know, that's what the state, that's what the judge said in this case. Again, didn't touch on those exceptions, which concerns me. It's concurrents. It's not binding, but it's exceptionally good advice and it's addressed to city officials. So I think it's important to to bring to your attention. Um. You know, that's that's a lot of information, uh. But really, that's what I wanted to get across, and those tenants say it all. So, um. Given how much time we have left, you know, we can, we can do that, that question and answer if that works for you and I can clarify anything that I've told you or, you know, we can talk about specific examples. Anything you want to talk about, that works all for you.
I have a question. The first case you talked about, you said some lady was going to have to go to jail. Sound like it was just her.
She's the one that appealed.
So.
She made the.
What happened to the other person?
They were convicted as well, my understanding.
Convicted.
They were.
That's what I didn't understand. I mean, uh, when you said it, it was like there. She's going to jail and fixing to go to jail. I thought there's got to be two.
The spotlight's on her, and the reason I'm focusing on her is because she actually appealed. You know, this is a. Court case where you look at an opinion that we review legally is always an appeals type of case. So, you know, all these folks were prosecuted, but that's prosecution. And she brought up legal arguments to make challenges and so forth, and that's where this case came from. And so while the other folks were convicted, really the focus is on her and she was the. You know, the primary, even though they all violated the sunshine law, she was the primary violator, I'll say, by kind of. You know, really. Forcing the meeting as well as, uh, you know, uh. Essentially. Perjuring herself.
Okay, I got it. I just was confused that I only, you want to talk about one person, although. How can that be one person? I got it.
Takes more than one.
Yes.
Uh, except, that's actually a quick, a good, quick exception. Um, doesn't really apply to you, but it's interesting. You know, you can have a sunshine violation with just one person. And that can occur if someone has delegated power. And they're eliminating decisions or making decisions essentially. Uh, if you ever have someone who. Uh. Basically has the power to make a decision, or for instance, we'll put it this way. Um, if you were to go out for bid. And someone on staff said, nope, we're not going to take this option to counsel, we're we're going to eliminate this person, this person, this person. They're doing a task-making ability that really is up to you. So essentially, uh, that could be a sunshine violation. It wasn't conducted in the sunshine and they didn't have that actual power to do it. So that is. Probably the only exception I can think of where one person can violate the sunshine law, but it can't happen. You know, likewise, if one of you had. Or we won't say you, but a a member of a a city council somewhere else had consolidated power and they made decisions and, you know, did. Do in an open, uh, public, uh, setting, then that could be a a sunshine violation.
Can I ask you another question?
Yes, sir.
Um. Since. I've taken on this position. I've talked with some other folks in some other towns and in one town has decided to have five voting members. But they have the mayor as the sixth person on the council but cannot vote. And they say that gets them around some town law as far as the mayor's concerned. I have. You know, I get it, okay, if that's not a non-voting member. But if that mayor goes around and speaks to everybody on the council and kind of. Gets a poll, so to speak, of how there's.
Polling is illegal.
I was gonna say, to me, that's still, you got a sunshine problem.
Mm-hmm.
If I'm, if my brain's working right.
Right.
So. The, they keep saying, well, that gets them around the mayor and get around some town, but I don't, I don't see it that way. I mean, he could. Talk to each one of the members or she can talk to each one of the members. But. They, they can't really share that information with another member.
Exactly. That that can be that conduit type of situation. I don't know the particular city that you're talking about. I don't know their charter situation, but yeah.
Won't go into that, but they told me this and I I'm like, hmm, that's interesting, but I thought I still don't see how. They say the mayor can talk to anybody on the council and kind of feel them out and I was like, wait a minute. No, you still got a problem.
Right, yeah.
It's my thought, but I just. Kind of runs by you.
Dunellen has a city clerk, you know, i- i- the city clerk, uh, staff, they can talk to each of you, but yes, they can't poll you. They can't say, well, what do these five members think and get your opinions and then go make a decision and take action based on that? That would be problematic, right?
Well, that's what, when I heard it, I thought, that's still going to give you problems. I I said, I.
Okay.
I want to ask you one more question. The audience going. Uh, the audience, oh.
Yes, ma'am.
The mayor council form of government is what he's talking about. The mayor does not have a vote.
Yeah, you can have. That's not the form of Dunellen's government, correct?
But but what I'm saying. A law, aren't a lot of small towns going to do this to allow citizens and chance. And actively participate in governing their own town because of sunshine law that almost created. The negative for why would you want to put yourself out there as a volunteer to run your government? And you're putting everything out there. You know, it's discouraging civic participation, in my opinion. And the law should be changed, especially as the legislation doesn't follow. But if you have the mayor council form of government and the mayor does that, how's that being different from our city core that can come in better, everybody?
It's not.
So I'm wondering if you see a trend for that, the small towns definitely.
Most, uh, I think that, and and I'm, you know, I'm I'm not looking at statistics right now, but I think most, uh, the most popular form of government is that weak mayor form of government. That we see here in Dunellen, essentially where you have a mayor, but they don't have. Mayor might have some powers, to call meetings and so forth, that are a little bit beyond, but generally they sit as a council member. No, I haven't seen a. You know, a move to create strong mayor forms of government. Um, where essentially, I think what you're talking, there's a few different ways of doing it. But, you know, it's it's a situation where a mayor almost acts more as like a city manager. Um, in a strong mayor, there's also. Uh, a a little different variation of that where the mayor doesn't have any special powers and they might be part of the board, but they don't have. Those strong mayor powers. Um, I don't see any movement to go to those types of government to avoid the sunshine law, no. Uh, because no matter what, as as we just discussed, it always does. Apply, even if you have a situation where someone else can talk to someone, you still can't do that. Stuff, you still can't have those conversations that would allow you to more efficiently make decision, or not you, shouldn't use you. But to allow that board to more efficiently make decisions outside of the sunshine. So it, it it's it's a form of governance, but it doesn't really get anybody anywhere, any, you know, additional ways to. Um. I don't want to use the word circumvent, but to. Create a situation where they have an advantage to be efficient. Right?
And and that's why it was explained to me. And I I just kept sitting there and listening to him talk. Uh, and this was a mayor in another town. And I just listened to him talk and I was like, hmm, I don't, I don't see how you can go around and. I see how you can speak to each one of them because you're not sunshine. But you can't bring come, bring all that together. Or discuss, okay, I've talked to. Julianne here, and I understand what she's thinking. I go over to Rex and say, Julianne's thinking that, well, that's a conundrum. I mean, you you've got a problem.
Right, right.
I kept hearing, I was like, no, you can't do that.
So I've talked to all five of my council members. I know that four support it and one doesn't, so I'm going to go ahead and make this decision. I know that four are behind me. That's that polling, that's that problem, that's.
That's what. I kept hearing that I I don't, I don't have to work with sunshine because I can talk to each one of them. Well, I see how you can talk to each one of them, but you can't do anything with it. Well, okay, alright. Sorry to get off on that. Anybody else in the audience have a question? Brenda, you got a question? You're good, okay. Roger, you got a question? Yes, sir.
Oh.
Oh, okay. Anybody else up here?
No, I mean, like I say, I was in a small town and they were talking about they've gone to this form of government and I was listening to them and and they thought it was great. And I just kept listening going, you know, I just don't see how you can get around some of this. You're still going to have a problem. But hey.
And and there might be some discussion of small towns changing government for any form of matters, you know, I I I just personally, I'm not aware of a trend. To try to accomplish that.
Right.
You know, that I've seen, you know, doesn't mean that it's it's not necessarily out there, but I'm I'm pretty in tune to it and I just, I haven't observed it and I haven't seen those kinds of conversations. For the exact reason that this law is so brutal. Brutal. And so such a huge umbrella that covers so many different things.
Absolutely. Absolutely, okay, alright. Any other questions on sunshine that we need to discuss? We all good? If sorry, everybody, can I get a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.